Calling meeting order this morning. And, uh... Please pray with me. Father, thank you for yet another day here in South Mississippi. And we thank you for your abundant blessings. We ask that you please be with us today and every day as we deliberate the business of our county. And we ask that you, everything that we do be pleasing in your sight. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Y'all listen. The diverse peoples who have inhabited the site and a broader community past the Golden City. And where I asked construction in 1757 during the French colonial period, the La Pointe Creve House, forming on as the old Spanish fort, is the oldest scientifically dated building in Mississippi and may be the oldest house between Appalachian and Rocky Mountains. Whereas the La Pointe Creve House stands as the only surviving example of Tadicongree construction along the entire Gulf Coast, representing its rare architectural decay. And I have no idea what Tadicongree...
But if he wants to know, he can come visit us. And you want to, so you can talk to your own wife.
That's right. I didn't remember that. Whereas the La Pointe Creve House is recognizable and Charitza recognizable and cherished landmark, overlooking Creve's lake and situated beside the historic Creve Cemetery. And whereas, nor the past seventy-five years and continuing today, the La Pointe Creve Board of Directors and dedicated volunteers have played a crucial role in the restoration, ongoing maintenance, and fundraising efforts that have preserved the historic site for future generations. And whereas the home and museum remain open seven days a week, welcoming both residents and visitors should support the heritage and significance. Whereas with the mission of expanding engagement through improved visitation, educational program, and corporate sponsorship, the La Pointe Creve Foundation is actively planning the construction of a public event center adjacent to the museum. Now be it therefore resolved, as the Jackton County Board of Supervisors encourages all members of the community to participate in events commemorating the 75th anniversary of the opening of the La Pointe Creve House and to continue supporting future initiatives at preserve... Should I get a motion? Is that a motion in favor? Say, now Mr. Morris? All those in favor? Now, this is... I have been, and I did even know who Ted was. But that's okay. I know him. It is really good.
Well, once we figure out that we stepped in there and heard who was there, we thought it was a great time to kind of re-ingratiate and introduce ourselves to the community. Because I, I went there as a kid, but there's a lot of people that don't even know it's there. And so, we really want to increase that. Right now, we have a hundred... But a hundred and seventy-five children coming on September 22nd for a field trip day. And we invite the whole public to come out on that evening for sitting down with sunsets, um, for some snacks, and then it's fun. And then the whole weekend, we're gonna have exhibits and a free admission to try to introduce stuff and... We introduce ourselves, we defend. And I'm the newbie to the board, but I'm super excited about being in the park and working with these type of people who've been there since I've been. And remember, this is not just supposed to do with them. This is the, I mean, the whole entire Gulf Coast. It's supposed to be state, it's supposed to be... Oh, region, yes. Yes, yes. Thank you so much. Come out, let's never mind, keep pointing. Yes. Follow what they...
We gave a tour of me, you know...
I've been out there multiple times.
Yeah, but I very...
You seen Mr. Dorette there?
All right. That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I don't have any.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bosa?
None.
Mr. Eldridge?
We got two. Uh, one can go on consentment, uh, consent agenda, agenda. It's an amendment to spread on the minutes, the redemption and resettlement report. And the other one is an amendment, uh, uh, setting the roles of real and personal property assessments in Jackson County. That needs to go after the tax appeal hearing, uh, number ten. So it needs to go after the tax protests have been heard.
Don't let me forget it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fulton?
No, sir.
Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Okay. Mr. Comer?
No, sir.
Are there any others? Anybody else having amendments? Okay. Not, could I get an order approving the amendments to the agenda? I have a motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. That brings us down to general public comments. Is there anyone here for general public comments? Okay. Oh, come on, come on. Give us your name and address, please.
It's Chris Foray with Coast Transit Authority at 333 DeVese Road, Gulfport, Mississippi.
And Inet Barrios also with Coast Transit Authority. New coming in. So nice to meet all of you. And this is for Coast Transit Authority's fiscal year 2026 subsidy request. We do have a handout here for everyone. I am new to the area, coming in as the new executive director, coming in from Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. Prior to that, um, coming in from, uh, United States Army, also in transportation, and also from Orleans Parish, um, with, uh, seven years in transportation as well. Um, the subsidy request, from what I understand, is an ongoing, has been here for a long time, certainly something that, um, all of you should be familiar with. Um, the breakdowns are, as you will see, uh, we did have a small increase this year, and that's primarily due to the insurance that we're facing with claims, um, for this region have unfortunately gone up quite a bit, as well as some other prices like gas. And if you see the difference between Jackson and Harrison County, that's mostly due to, um, Harrison County having a little more with advertising revenue, um, benches and shelters within our jurisdiction. I will say, though, I was surprised, the Coast Transit Authority is not just a Coast Transit Authority, but it is a regional authority. Um, it is the only one in the region. And so, um, my job here, as I'm the board, is to lead this agency to try to find, um, bring in all its partners, subsidies, and counties and cities to hopefully move forward to more of a regional partnership and try to find better ways of funding this agency. Um, so hopefully, one day I'll be in front of you to maybe have different conversations regarding that. We do have federal funding, as you all know. Um, this year, we're upwards of, uh, twelve million to run the service, but our, our struggle is with that match. We can have all the federal funds in the world, but if we don't have the operating capital, we can't utilize them.
So we typically do give a subsidy to CTA for their operations. Uh, they have two routes that are in the western part of Jackson County. One is in the Ocean Springs area, and the other is in the St. Martin area. Um, and it appears that some of the ridership is up in those areas. And I can certainly see, um, uh, even more increased traffic, specifically in the Ocean Springs area with, with Amtrak coming on, onboard. So, um, they gave me a call last week, uh, they're asking for an increase in their subsidy. And, uh, I asked them just to come before the board today, since we're trying to wrap up our budget discussions, uh, this afternoon. And I think the current subsidy is, is it twenty-five thousand or thirty?
Thirty?
Thirty thousand.
Moving to forty, yes.
And they're asking for forty.
Okay.
And so that's kind of why they're here today.
Okay.
And we don't have to decide today.
Yeah.
Uh, just felt like it'd be good for them to, to, uh, come and give the presentation and let you meet the new director.
Hmm, okay. Well, that's good. Yeah. Everything's going up, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is.
Hadn't seen anything go down lately. All right. Well, good. Well, we'll sure take a look at it during our budget discussion.
Feel free to reach out.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all. Anyone else for general public comments?
Yes.
All right. No, we'll move on. That brings us down to the consent agenda. Need a motion to accept a consent agenda as amended.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you all. Let me turn. Uh, bring this down to the tax session. Mr. Elmore, come on.
All right. Good morning. Um, what we have here is the typical process for the exemptions that you guys granted after the Department of Revenue certification. So the first one there is Ballinger, Mississippi Repair.
I have a motion by Mr. Bosa, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. Second one is Ballinger, Mississippi Shipbuilding.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. Third one is Chanh, Mississippi.
Chanh? I have a motion by Mr. Taylor. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. Next is Chevron USA.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Then you have Huntington Ingalls.
Who tried? Okay, and a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And the last one is Superior Optical Labs.
I have a motion by Mr. Bosa.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Hey, Nick, quick question. On all these, on the assessment roles that I have, you know, how I have to break it down in exemptions and not, would these be showing up in the exempt codes or they will be?
Yes, they'll, they'll be in the exempt, just under the assumption that everything would have been on.
Was gonna be approved?
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks a lot. Uh, Ms. Wells?
Good morning. The first item I have is to order claim, um, approving the claim socket.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. The second item I have is the resolution authorizing the inter fund loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right. The second item I have is the resolution authorizing the inter fund loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And the last item I have is the resolution authorizing the operating transfer for September 30th, 2025.
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. Wells. Uh, next on the agenda is a planning appeal that we cannot start until 10 o'clock, so we'll skip over it and come on down. And, uh, this is a tax protest, is the next one for 11 o'clock. Josh, did you have something?
I think, well, I think, we gotta hear that tax protest at 11, before we can...
Do that one? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're gonna come on down then to item 11, celebrate K-20 twentieth anniversary. Uh, is that Paige? Is that you? Come on up, Paige. You doing all right this morning?
I am, thank you. Thank you. It's good to see you all this morning. I saw some of you, uh, at the Amtrak station, uh, this, uh, weekend, and thank you for supporting that, uh, effort. It was a great success, uh, and a great day for all of coastal Mississippi. I am here this morning, though, with two requests. The first request is for, uh, the second annual Saver Jackson County event. The Jackson County Chamber of Commerce is hosting, as you, uh, many of you were in attendance last year. It is an opportunity for us to celebrate and enjoy, uh, the restaurants all across the coast. It's hosted at the old place in Goche, and our request for contribution to support it is $1,000.
That's already in the report. On the consent agenda.
Okay, perfect. Secondly, that was easy. Secondly, we are here, um, I am representing a collaborative we have formed, which is appropriate considering collaboration is what led us through the storm twenty years ago. Many of you sitting here, um, were there with us, uh, after, uh, eight-thirty in the morning on August 29th, 2005. But we have formed this collaborative to create an event called Celebrate K-20: Reflection Resiliency Rebuilding. Celebrate K-20 will take place on Thursday evening, August 28th, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Sound Amphitheater. We have music and food planned, as well as, uh, some recognitions of the mayors, the county administrators, and the supervisors who are still with us from 2005, um, now twenty years later by their current counterparts. Uh, our collaborative consists of some of your staff here in the county, of course, our county chamber, the Ocean Springs Chamber, the three main streets, and the four cities. All have representatives to come together to create this opportunity, of course, to, uh, as we said, reflect on the twenty years, but mostly to celebrate where we've come in twenty years, and just meant to be, um, a time of celebration and unity, and, um, our reflection, resiliency, and rebuilding. So the request for this event, uh, is in addition to the sponsors we've already received, you are the last group for us to come to, and so the request actually is for up to $5,000. The rate we are going now with the budget and the expenses, as well as what we have acquired from our other sponsors, I don't foresee us needing the full 5,000, but we did wanna ask for up to 5,000.
Okay. Okay.
No.
Did you make the motion, Mr.?
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you, and we hope to see you and all of you there as well on the 28th.
Sounds good. Thank you, Paige. Brian, that brings us down to state.
Just a couple of quick things, uh, on the state level. Just wanted to let you all know that we're working on an amendment to our local and private legislation that we have for the Fair Board. They're working with the Fair Board on that, and also with Crystal, to try to make that better reflect the way it actually operates out there. And so, uh, that is at the legal department now. They're looking over it, and we will be finalizing that and send it to our legislatures very soon. Uh, on the federal side, uh, we hosted, uh, some of EZL's and Will Wicker's staff over the last couple of weeks, and I know Mr. Morris and Mr. Taylor were involved with some of those meetings, but mainly talking about, uh, GO Mesa funds and how we use those and the importance of the GO Mesa funds, uh, also the FEMA reforms, and particularly the permitting process that's involved with that, and, uh, and, and the issues that surround building back marine structures after a hurricane. Uh, some of the permitting can be rather lengthy and complicated, uh, and expensive, for that matter. After a hurricane, we eventually get the permits, but it takes a long time to do it. Takes a couple of years to get a permit, and if there was a way that we could streamline that, uh, you're building back the same pier, the same boat launch, the same beach in the same place, um, why do we have to go through two or three years worth of permitting to do that? And so, those are the things that we're, um, discussing with their office. And that, and that's all I had.
Nothing, anything on federal?
That was federal. Yeah, that was federal.
Kind of wrapped it all up?
Yes, sir.
All right. That brings us down to supervisor items. I didn't have anything. Mr. Morris?
I didn't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yeah, I would like to point out that the Chevron Board of Directors are going to be in Pascagoula sometime in September. I don't know exactly when. Um, they are very interested in visiting, visiting their locations, and, uh, I think we need to get with the Chevron people and see if we can't maybe support that in some manner.
Hmm, okay. What was the date they were coming?
I, I don't have the exact dates here. It's in September.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Ross, you didn't have anything?
September 23rd.
September 27th?
Third.
Twenty-third, okay. Okay. Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bosa?
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna update the board on something I had brought up several months ago, in, uh, in reference to the Great River, uh, Water Company there in Gup Park Estates on the south end of, uh, the county. So, you know, we were having an issue with, uh, water quality, water pressure, and, uh, you know, Public Service Commissioner's been very involved, Great River's been, been involved, and the Utility Authority's also been involved on trying to, uh, hopefully come to an agreement here before long, maybe by the end of the year, hopefully, to, uh, supply fresher water, better water pressure, and, and just a better overall quality of service for that Great River Utility customers. Uh, there was a, a meeting set up by some of the residents, uh, last Tuesday that I attended, and, uh, I'd like to thank them for setting that meeting up and, and, uh, bringing the Southern Public Service Commissioner there, uh, Great River had their representative there, and, uh, Utility Authority was there also. So, I would say that I took a good, uh, feeling from that, that they are working together. I'd like to thank the Public Service Commissioner, who, uh, will tell you, I wore him out about a year ago on this issue, and, uh, Great River's had two different people in charge, and the guy that's currently in charge has been there for about six months. He's done a great job. Brad Cates, uh, local guy that grew up in Gup Park Estates and, uh, very familiar with the issues. Um, he's, he's done a great job with it. Uh, so, I'm just here to report that hopefully, uh, the Utility Authority's been very involved, and what they're hoping to do is buy water from the Utility Authority instead of trying to treat the water that, that the wells are not deep enough to treat, uh, hopefully they're gonna buy better quality water from the Utility Authority and, uh, be able to distribute it through Gup Park Estates, St. Andrews, OSHA, all the Great River Utility customers. So, hopefully, that's gonna happen. Uh, I'm gonna remain optimistic that it happens and, uh, do everything I can, and along with the citizens that are working on this. There is a group of, uh, citizens down there in Gup Park Estates that are working on it, and, and they've been doing a good job with it, so, uh, so hopefully, uh, we'll all make all this happen. That being said, I did mention to the board, uh, about some road issues we were having. Joe and I have reached out to, uh, the guy in charge of the Mississippi Division. I, I don't think we're gonna need legal, uh, I don't think we're gonna need to do anything legal. They're gonna work with us on getting all those road repairs, uh, taken care of as soon as they can. So, uh, one thing they did do, instead of subcontracting all their repairs out, they do have employees now, so they do, you'll see some Great River service trucks down there. Uh, I think that was one thing they realized, that they were gonna, they were gonna have some, have to have some boots on the ground that answer to the utility company, not, not subcontractors. So, I, I'm, like I said, I'm very optimistic that, uh, this is gonna hopefully be a benefit for the, for the customers, and, uh, I'm just glad that everybody that's been involved in making this happen has, uh, you know, guided to this point, so. So anyway, I just wanted to update the board. I don't think we're gonna have to have any legal action against them. I think, uh, I think it's somewhat getting worked out.
Yeah. All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Randy. Uh, let me back up. I was looking forward. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything, any action that need to be taken on the Chevron issue?
For, for what purpose?
No, I didn't. I wouldn't, I was looking forward, wouldn't pay enough attention to what you were saying, to be honest with you.
I wanna make sure I didn't overlook anything.
Okay. I was looking at the rest of the agenda. My bad. All right. That brings us over to closed session. I guess we'll move on into closed session.
Uh, Mr. Cummins, we have, I think, six matters, uh, pending litigation, uh, Ross versus Jackson County, it's a case in federal court discussion regarding location or expansion, expansion of the business in Pascagoula. Once again, uh, potential litigation where the developers of Legacy Park are threatening to sue the county. Uh, discussion regarding prospective business decisions of St. River Health System, potential litigation involving a planning department matter, and, uh, discussion of a personnel matter regarding a board appointee. Those are the six items we have on.
And you got Earl, the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right. Um, right, we have a, a discussion with Mr., uh, with, with Earl Etheridge regarding, um, course of action regarding security issues and some, and some plans that he's brought to, uh, my attention.
All right. Very good. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Move. So move.
Motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you all.
from the Utility Authority and be able to distribute it through Gulf Park Estates, St. Andrews, OSHA, all the Great River Utility customers. So, hopefully, that's going to happen. I'm going to remain optimistic that it happens and do everything I can, along with the citizens that are working on this. There is a group of citizens down there in Gulf Park Estates that are working on it, and they've been doing a good job with it. So, hopefully, we'll all make all this happen. That being said, I did mention to the board about some road issues we were having. Joe and I have reached out to the guy in charge of the Mississippi Division. I don't think we're going to need legal... I don't think we're going to need to do anything legal. They're going to work with us on getting all those road repairs taken care of as soon as they can. So, one thing they did do, instead of subcontracting all their repairs out, they do have employees now. So, they do... You'll see some Great River service trucks down there. I think that was one thing they realized, that they were going to have to have some boots on the ground that answer to the utility company, not subcontractors. So, I'm, like I said, I'm very optimistic that this is going to hopefully be a benefit for the customers. And I'm just glad that everybody that's been involved in making this happen has, you know, got it to this point. So, anyway, I just wanted to update the board. I don't think we're going to have to have any legal action against them. I think it's somewhat getting worked out.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Randy. Let me back up. I was looking forward... Mr. Taylor, do you have anything, any action that need to be taken on the Chevron issue?
For what purpose?
No, I didn't. I wouldn't... I was looking forward, wouldn't pay enough attention to what you were saying, to be honest with you.
I want to make sure I didn't overlook anything. Okay.
I was looking at the rest of the agenda. My bad. All right. That brings us over to closed session. I guess we'll move on into closed session.
Mr. Cummins, we have, I think, six matters pending litigation. Rolf versus Jackson County, it's a case in federal court discussion regarding location or expansion of the business in Pascagoula. Once again, potential litigation where the developers of Legacy Park are threatening to sue the county. Discussion regarding prospective business decisions of St. River Health System. Potential litigation involving a planning department matter. And discussion of a personnel matter regarding a board appointee. Those are the six items we have on.
What about Earl?
And you got Earl, the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right. Right, we have a discussion with Earl Etheridge regarding course of action regarding security issues and some plans that he's brought to my attention.
All right. Very good. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Move. So, move.
Motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you all.
Marcus, before you go, Mr. Comer needs to read something.
Right. The Board took action while in executive session. The action was to pass a resolution of the Board Supervisors of Jackson County, Mississippi, authorizing the settlement of two lawsuits, one, Dennis Lee Roth versus Amanda Harris pending United States District Court, Southern District of Mississippi. The other was Dennis Lee Roth versus McBride, also pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Mississippi. Both lawsuits were settled for a combined total of $15,000, and the Board Supervisors passed that resolution unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Marcus.
Okay. Wednesday, June the 18th, the Planning Commission heard the application from Scott Stample and Mary Gildry. This was a special exception. The application is SEC-05-2025-00066. And this was to allow construction of a 30 by 50 metal storage building to be located in front of the residence for personal use at 4821 Bell Fountain Drive in the Fountain Blue area. This property is owned R1. It's a single-family residential. It's .0. 0.37 acres in size. It's also located in a flood zone. Part of it's in a velocity zone, part of it's in an AE flood zone with elevations of 17 and 19 foot. The applicant comments were that they currently are leasing a building from a neighbor and to store their boat, jet ski, lawn mowers, items like that. They would like to have this building for their own personal use. The Planning Commission did vote four to one to approve the request with the stipulation that instead of metal, that it, for the facade, that the facade matched the current house, which I believe is hardy plating. So they approved it with that stipulation. An appeal was filed by Gina Sabatini, and Ms. Sabatini is here to present her case. Okay. We'll leave this up in the background. So you're going to start with this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have one first? Oh, she's got one.
Yeah, if you need passes, stuff out to the board.
So.
So you're just showing pictures. I'll help you with it. Just tell me what you need, and I'll be glad.
Okay. Yeah, you.
Yeah, okay.
So how do I get when I want to go to the next one?
If you want to go to the next one, just click off.
Thank you, ma'am.
And go to the next one.
Well, does it have like a forward button, so I don't have to keep doing that?
I'm not sure if it does or not.
So if I just do this?
Okay. Yes, okay.
Okay. Okay. All right. So my name is Gina Sabatini. I reside at 1006 Joseph Street in Ocean Springs. I do own property at 4,900 East Bell Fontaine. And I'm here to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to approve a 30 by 50 metal shed with a hardy board facade to be built at 4821 East Bell Fontaine Road. The applicants are my sister, Mary Gildry, and her boyfriend, Scott Stample. Mary is the sole owner of the property. She's a resident of Metairie, Louisiana, where she lives full-time with her adult special needs daughter. She uses the Bell Fontaine home in the summer and some weekends during the year. Scott Stample lives in Destrehan, Louisiana. I want to give you a little history of the property. The property that Mary has, our parents bought that property in 1980, and they built a small house there, which back then they called them fish camps. So it's just a 1,200 square-foot house. When our father passed away in 2020, he gave Mary his house. He wanted her to have a fully paid-for house where she and her daughter could live. I was Dad's power of attorney. He counted on me to advise him on his property, his finances, and his health care. He asked me if I thought Mary could handle the house if he gave it to her. He was nervous about it, so we actually talked about it quite a bit, and I assured him that she could handle it. I'm pretty sick about that advice at this point, and by the time I finish my presentation, you will understand why. have, we all get along. There's two, two girls, two boys, or, you know, and we all help each other. We've shared money. Anything you need, all you have to do is call, and that person comes running. My two brothers, after Mary got the house, it had termite damage, water damage, and they came in and made all those repairs, cleaned up the termite, rebuilt all that, took out the front, part of the front wall, repaired that. Any work, they, they, the floors got redone, the bathrooms got redone. One brother redid all the rotten decking and built new front steps. So that's the kind of family that we have. So there is no problem, or has not been a problem, between my sister and me. I mean, we used to talk every day, every other day, every day. Anything she needed, I gave her, and anything I needed, she gave me. So that's, that's the relationship we're talking about. So the fact that I'm objecting to what she wants, you know, it, it has to do with my property value. It has nothing to do with me liking or not liking, you know, somebody. You know, although Mary and I talked every day, and we saw each other Memorial Weekend, she never mentioned anything about wanting a shed. I actually found out she wanted it when I got the letter in the mail from the Planning Commission. That's how I found out. So that was a week and a half after Memorial Weekend. And I kept waiting for her to call me, you know, and there was never a call. So I finally called her, and I asked her, "What's going on?" And I said, "Why didn't you ask me or talk to me about the shed before you did this?" She said she didn't think it was a big deal. Well, anytime you try to reduce my property value, and that would be her or anybody else on the street, then I'm gonna, that's gonna be a big deal to me, and I'm gonna fight ya. So. Okay, so what I wanna show you here is, it, most of y'all probably have been all over the county, but just a refresher on, this is East Bellefontaine Road. And like I say, you have some fish camps there, but you also have some really nice homes going in. The one in the picture went up for sale recently, and it was up for sale for 800 some odd dollars. I think it sold in a week for about that. My brother's on the street too, Danny, and I would say his property value's probably 1.2 at this point. And Howland Kimberly Vaughn, who are just to the right of Mary, their property, they have 150 feet on the water with one large home and another smaller home, and they just put in a garage. So I would say their property value's probably 1.5, 1.7. So let me just show ya. So that's my property. So what I, I don't have a house on there right now. I lived there before Katrina. I've got 300 road front, 300 feet road front. So whatever anybody does across the street affects me. So I've got, I've got four different property owners across from me. So having that shed where it's gonna be is gonna, I'm gonna be staring at it every day. Okay, so this is the front of Mary Gildry's house. The pink house you see in the picture is Howland Kimberly Vaughn's house, and sort of a cottage look, and then Mary's house is behind those trees. That's the way it used to look. And there's another angle. And there's East Bellefontaine Road, beautiful trees. Okay, this house just went up for sale on East Bellefontaine. This house is four houses to the east of Mary Gildry's house. It just went up for sale for 2.5 million. So, you know, you gotta think about, okay, are we gonna have any more million-plus homes built on East Bellefontaine if we're putting sheds in the front yard? I don't, I don't think so. I don't think anybody's gonna spend that kinda money and wanna drive by that. And the one that they're asking for is gonna be 35 feet from the center line of the road. It's gonna be squarely in the front yard. I mean, right in the front yard, 30 feet wide, 50 feet long, and over 20 feet high. I mean, I, I'm, you know, I don't, I just don't see it happening. Okay, so in your packet, I didn't put the property names on this one. I should have, but you do have it in your packet there. So, so what I'm showing you is on the north side, on where you have Apple Street and Bellefontaine. That's my property. So it's two acres, and again, the important part of that, I think, is I'm 300 feet. So everything on the south side, starting with where you see MOC. So MOC, Martin Wayne, Mary, and the Vaughns. All that property is facing me. Now, if you look where you see MOC on the map, so that's gonna be the one just south of Apple Street, where there's a big house there, and then there's a 50-foot piece, there's already a big green metal shed there. It's 30 by 40 by 20 feet tall, and probably 22 feet with the roof on it. And it's got huge metal roll-up doors, like garage doors, and it is metal. So my house used to be on that lot across from there. So if I rebuild in that same spot, that's my view, the front of that metal shed with those two garage doors. One thing I want you to look at too is, is those homes that are there, do you see how close they are? So Mary's is on a 50-foot wide lot. Okay, and see how close she is to the property line? And then if you look at the Vaughn's house, they, they actually got a variance to come closer to the property line, so they're only four feet from the property line. So we're all pretty close together in there. Okay, let me get to my next. Okay. So the shed that's on the MOC's property, back when you looked at the map, so this is the view from my lot facing their property. So that's the view of that. There's a side angle to show you how big it is, and there's the front. I think what they're planning to do though with theirs, they've got three boats. Two of them have all the radar equipment on top, so they're actually gonna have to have two of those really tall doors on the front. This is a picture of the shed that was built, when you go into that last curve of East Bellefontaine where the houses are on the water, this was built. And to me, before this was built, this was the most beautiful property on East Bellefontaine on the water. I always said, "I wish I could have that. I love it." Well, that's what they've done to it. They put a metal shed in the front yard, which is very disappointing. And every time I go out there, I'm like, "Oh, that looks so bad," you know, kinda ruined that. So this is the side of it, and so this is gonna be a problem when you're looking at metal sheds. I mean, they're so industrial-looking, and because they are storage utility buildings, you tend to pile trash up against them. There's two garbage cans, there's two pieces of wood. I can imagine someone's gonna prop a ladder, hang a ladder on it, you're gonna put all your spare wood. All that's gonna be in the front yard. Okay. So, just for comparison, and y'all will recognize this. Okay, so this is on Highway 57. This is your, your Fountain Blue Volunteer Fire Department. To me, metal sheds like this, they are for storage for counties, for cities, you know, if you have a commercial business, whatever. And, I mean, you see how big that is? So I don't know how many feet back that is, I didn't measure it, but theirs is gonna be 50 feet. So I don't know where that hits there, maybe about halfway, a little beyond halfway. This one's only about 14 feet tall, so what they're wanting to build is 20 feet tall, not including the, the peak for the roof. Okay, there's another side view, and then, then that's what you get. So picture that 20 feet tall, 50 feet long, and 30 feet wide in the front yard of a house. Oh, shoot. Okay, so this is Mary Gildry's property, and so it is the same property you saw in the beginning with all the trees in the front yard, but all the oak trees have been cut. I think 15 live oaks were cut, all the ones in the, on the water side and all the ones in the back. So, you know, the property, you know, doesn't really look the same, but one thing you can see for this, how close the houses are. They're very cottage-y, very beach-housy, just a good look. Okay, so the applicants wanna build a shed like the green one that you've already seen. So one thing I want you to make note of is Mary's house is small. It's only 1,200 square feet. It's on a 50-foot wide lot, okay? So what this, what the orange cones represent is the 30 feet wide that the shed would be. So it's gonna take up almost all of the property. So the angles are a little bit strange, but the cone on the left, that's 10 feet off the property line. And then the cone on the right is 10 feet off the neighbor's property line, so that's your 30 feet. So, you know, so we're gonna just go ahead and wedge a boat shed in there. So I think, you know, there's some problems with that, but I'll show you what that's gonna look like. So that's the green metal shed that they want to build, the neighbors, two houses over, that's what they want. And the Planning Commission said, "Yes, you can do that, but you gotta put a hardy plank facade on it to match what's on your house." Well, I, I think that's the most shocking picture I've ever seen. We're gonna put that in a front yard. It's gonna be 35 feet back. That oak tree is at the 35-foot mark. I just think it's a shocking look. Anybody I've shown that to has said, "Oh my God, there's no way they're gonna approve that." And I said, "They did, and that's why I'm appealing." It's, it's pretty shocking, I think. And it's inappropriate, it's offensive, it has total lack of respect for the neighbors. One thing that you can see there is how much it's gonna affect the Vaughns' property. That's the people with the pink house. So, you know, at, at first, there was a, along with asking for the shed, they also wanted a variance to come five feet even closer to the property line. That would've only left nine feet between the 50-foot long shed and the Vaughns' property, but the fire marshal said, "No, you can't do that because of, you know, the possibility of the structures catching on fire." And so my question to that is, okay, so they didn't get the five-foot variance. We still have a massive building that's, it's not nine feet, but it's 14 feet of separation. So if the whole thing catches on fire, okay, because they're gonna store three boats full of gasoline and two jet skis full of gasoline, and probably containers full of extra gasoline, that's a lot of gasoline, okay? So if that catches on fire, my question would be, can that pink house survive that? Or is everything still gonna catch on fire? Because we're only talking about a five-foot difference. So, you know, I think you have to take some variables into consideration. Is it, is it windy that day? How, what's the response time of the fire department to get there? Is the whole thing gonna be up in flames? So you've got, how much gas are they storing? So there's a lot of variables there. So in your packet that I gave you on page 22, one of the, it was on the motion to actually allow the shed. So if you look down at line 12, it says, "Mr. Brewer, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, we're still sitting, ready for a motion, someone. Mr. Shoal, I will do one, but I want some guidance whenever we get to the facade part of it, because I want to add that in there. I recommend approval of SPEC-0522, 2025-0066 to allow construction of a metal storage building to be located in the front yard on PIDN-0505-0142.000." Mr. Ketchought, I would change that because you said metal storage building. I would change that to whatever the aesthetics that you... Mr. Shoal, I was gonna add building to include a facade or other facade, a facade. Mr. Ketchought, something that matches the, and then you go to page 23 of your packet. Mr. Shoal, to match the current house, current building. Mr. Brewer, that's right. Mr. Shoal, would that work? Okay, and this is, to me, a really important part. With the facade to match the current house on the lot, the basis for the recommendation is that the requested exception will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or the general welfare. I think it's gonna be pretty injurious. I think all of our property values are gonna be absolutely destroyed. The Vaughn, that pink house that they have is a VRVO. Who's gonna wanna rent that? You know, the view in the front yard off the front porch is gonna be the side of a building. You know, the poor people on the other side, on the right side, every time they come into their driveway, they're gonna have to look at a metal shed. Well, it's, it's technically, it's gonna have a facade, but you're gonna know it's a metal shed, so. And then across the street, if I decide to rebuild, or my daughter does, we're gonna be looking at that, so. Okay, so then on the next page, if you look at page, page 12, okay, and that's from variance 0067. Mr. Ketchought on line 18. Mr. Ketchought said, "It just sounds like you're building a building that's just too big for your lot." And, you know, it's a 50-foot lot, and we're trying to put something in there, you know, that's just, just way too big. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So, okay, so we're looking at this with the 30-foot wide shed, okay? So at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant said the neighbor to the right wouldn't mind sharing their property so the boat shed could be built. Okay, so your next sheet, which is page 17, if you'll look at line 18, it says, "Mr. Stample," or this is what Mr. Stample says, "So, but my neighbor Wayne, who's to my right, we have basically adjoining driveways with a small strip between it that we've now put, I ran irrigation for his entire property, fixed his bulkhead, we have irrigation in there now. That was gonna be beautified. We're gonna shrink that footprint so we can both grab larger driveways going down, because we do prefer to pull down like this, come through his and come out," and then we're on page 18, "vice versa. He uses our driveway, we use his." And then down to line 11 on page 18, "Mr. Stample, and with our two driveways, I don't think it creates a fire hazard either. We still have 20 feet." Okay, then on page 11, which is variant 0067, line four, "Scott, it seems like the five-foot is an issue, and I don't know if you can move five feet or..." And then Mr. Ketchought, "You have a 25-foot building instead of a 30-foot building. You can move five feet to the opposite side is what your commission is asking. Do you think that's possible? Mr. Ketchought, I think that will have, that will take his driveway up is the issue." And Mr. Stample, line 13, "Well, this will be a conversation with Wayne, kinda like the old statutes were vague, because friends became friends with Mary's dad, and they're like, 'You can do these things.'" So with Wayne, if Wayne would not object, which according to him, he wouldn't, if I just have to slide my limestone over to his spot between the two of us, like we said we would do anyway, then the five feet wouldn't matter. Okay? So, I'm gonna, let's look at this. So this is a view from the back of Mary Gildry's house to the road, okay? So the cone all the way to the right is 10 feet off the property. The cone in the middle, in the middle of the driveway, that represents the 30 feet, which only leaves them to that cone all the way to the left. That's the 10 feet for the driveway. So there's not much there. Okay, so this is shown a little farther back. So the cone all the way to the left shows you, I mean, not much of that center portion is Mary Gildry's. That's the neighbor's property. Only about one or two feet of that grassy area belongs to Mary Gildry. Okay, so I do have a letter from the neighbor of this, that owns this property. "To the Jackson County Board of Supervisors, letter of concern for SPEC-05-2025-00066, variant 052025-0067, 4821 East Bellefontaine. Addendum, August 13, 2025." And you do have this in your packet if you wanna see it. "I continue to support disapproval for the construction of an additional storage building at 4821 East Bellefontaine. In review of the transcripts of the meeting of the Planning Commission, there were some incorrect assertions made by Mr. Stample. He did not make improvements to our property as indicated. We paid him for sod, and he knew the local sod company, and he was able to facilitate that purpose, and his company installed the sprinkler system, but my husband and a crew he hired installed the sod and..." But my husband and a crew he hired installed the sod and repaired the bulkhead. We have not agreed to any modification to our driveway or the small piece of land between the driveways, most of which is on our property. My husband Wayne is actually plating on building rose beds and other gardens in that area when we are able to fully move the property. We did pay for movement of a utility pole that was positioned near both houses to the street, uh, to the street to allow easier access to the parking area under the house. Although that certainly benefited Mr. Sample and Ms. Gidry as well, it should not have been an indication that we were willing to have him move his driveway onto any of our property. As good neighbors, we have mutually agreed that to assist in easier parking, particularly when moving trailers, boats, et cetera, that we can use each other's driveways when needed. But again, this is not an indication that we have agreed to any movement or extension of his driveway onto our property. We have also allowed Mr. Sample to access his backyard, the water side of the property, with vehicles equipped when needed through our yard as there is a lean-to from, from their house that extends almost up to the property line that blocks their access. But again, this is a neighborly gesture, not an indication that we are willing to lose any of our property. Even if Mr. Sample and Mary Gidry decide to add their building directly to the back of the current house, as was discussed at the planning commission meeting, I am concerned that the width of the proposed house would limit their ability to have an independent driveway without attempting to extend into our property. And this is from Marta Rusley Parker, co-owner, forty-eight twenty-nine East Bel Fontaine Road, um, seven two seven CR, three eleven, Jonesboro, Arkansas, seven two four oh one. And again, this is the neighbor, um, to the right with this property shared there in, or not shared, but adjoining property there in the middle. Okay, now I do have a letter also for the board of supervisors from the couple that have the property that already have the big green shed that you've seen pictures of. And this is from Beth and John, and this is in your packet too. Beth and John Mock, forty-nine eleven East Bel Fontaine Drive, Ocean Springs, Mississippi, July thirty-first, thirty twenty-five. Subject, opposition of building variance request for forty-eight twenty-one East Bel Fontaine Drive, spec zero five two oh two five zero 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 six six. Dear Mr. Ketchat and commission members, I am writing to formally express my husband's and my strong opposition to the variance granted for forty-eight twenty-one East Bel Fontaine, Fontaine Drive on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. I respectfully ask that you also revisit and consider the concerns detailed in the letter I submitted on June seventeenth ahead of the initial hearing. The letter is intended to specifically address the points raised by Mr. Sample during that hearing regarding the existing building on our property. Property size comparison, Mr. Sample compared building a structure on his point three seven acre parcel to our one acre parcel. This comparison is fundamentally flawed. Our property is nearly three times the size, which makes it more, makes it significantly more feasible to accommodate a structure without encroaching on neighboring properties or impacting the driveways and access. Building a structure of that size on such a small lot inevitably imposes on surrounding residents and the character of the area. Misrepresentation of rental agreement. Mr. Sample also mentioned during the hearing that he currently rents our building to store his boat and that I plan to raise his rent. While I question the relevance of this point in a zoning hearing, I feel it is necessary to clarify the facts. The original agreement allowed him to use one bay solely for boat storage. Instead, he has used both bays to store not only his boat, but also jet skis, bicycles, and other miscellaneous items. Despite this, we allowed him to continue to use both bays and simply informed him that we would restructure the new contract to accurately reflect his expanded usage. Impact on property values and aesthetic appeal. When we purchased our property, when we purchased our property, the presence of the existing metal building gave me serious pause. The average buyer does not want a large, unattractive metal structure obstructing views on a golf front property. While we ultimately bought the home because we fell in love with the house and the view, the building remains an eyesore we see daily. And these are the owners of the picture, the shed, the green shed with the big doors. While I absolutely support the right of individuals to enjoy and develop their property, I believe that such rights must be balanced with the preservation of community standards, property values, and zoning regulations. This variance, in my view, does not serve the best interest of our neighborhood or uphold those principles. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would be happy to provide any additional information or participate in further discussions as needed. I would just show you just a couple more things. Okay, so one thing that was said at the planning commission meeting, oh, you know, we only asked for thirty feet wide because that's what they told us to do. They said, you ask for the biggest thing that you can and then you, then you can come down. Well, so what I did, I put the cones. The cone on the left shows the, where the shed would be, the right wall of the shed would be at twenty-five feet wide. So that would give them an extra fifteen feet from where the cone is to the property line. Okay, so where the grass line in that, that would be twenty-five feet. Okay, and there's that view from the back. And if I didn't say it already, that's my property across the road. And again, I would be looking at this big shed. Okay, so if they decide, well, we're not going to do twenty-five feet because the driveway's still a problem, that's twenty feet. So you're still taking up the front yard, um, with a building that's twenty feet high. There's not going to be, there's no way to hide that. You're going to be right on the road, there's no, there's no trees left going to be staring at that. And I'm going to tell you, no amount of landscaping is going to, is going to hide the fact that you have that gigantic shed there. And I'll, I'll tell you, he's going to, they're going to have to have the bigger shed. If you're trying to store, you know, a bay boat, an offshore boat, a flat boat, and two jet skis, they're going to build the thirty-foot wide shed. They, they, the twenty-five or the twenty's not going to, it's not going to hold what they need. So, okay, and again, we're there, okay? Okay, so these are just some pictures just to show you. So those cones represent thirty-five feet back, okay? And I've got the cone on the left, that's thirty-five feet from the center line to the front of the Vons' house. That's where the shed would be if they decide to do it thirty-five feet off the road. This is going to be what the Vons are going to be looking at with, with hardy plank, but still, it's massive. They're going to have an air conditioner unit, whoever's sitting on the front porch or in the front yard, there's piles of wood there. There's going to be garbage cans, there's going to be everything you can imagine. There's another view. Okay, so if they decide to come back farther, okay? So fifty feet would be from the little bush in front of the front porch to that back window. And that's what you'd be looking at. That's what the neighbors, uh, to the right of them would be looking at. Okay, so the cones show that, you're going to be looking at that. And this just shows, you know, how close the houses are. And here's, and here's how that, that green shed looks to the right of Wayne and Marta. So, you know, it's big, it's real big. Okay, so in closing, the planning commission passed this request based on wrapping the thirty-by-fifty metal shed in hardy plank siding. The hardy plank siding isn't going to hide the fact that this is a metal, commercial-sized storage building. The fact that it is twenty feet tall is going to give that away, as will the two sixteen-foot tall roll-up doors that will be installed. No amount of landscaping that applicants say they will do will camouflage this. Instead of trying to build a boat storage facility in your front yard, why not store your boats at a boat storage facility? If this shed is allowed, my advice to my neighbors and everyone else on the street is not to put any more money into your properties. Um, you know, pretty much, if we, if we allow this one, this is, this is huge. And so if this is okay, uh, you know, uh, next time someone comes up and they want a metal shed for a lawnmower or whatever, I mean, this is, this is huge. Um, and one thing to note, if you go on that, that math of all the properties, there are still thirty, over thirty vacant lots on the north side of the road. There are over ten vacant lots on the south side of the road. So if everybody builds something, they say, ooh, I want a metal boat storage shed. Yeah, I want that, I want that in the front yard, I want a shed. So if you say yes to this, we've still got a lot of undeveloped land on that street. Everybody's going to want a utility building in their front yard. Okay, my neighbors and I would like to see the ordinance enforced. And again, that was no utility buildings in a front yard. Um, I would like to see also added to that at some point, no metal sheds, um, even, even with a facade. Again, metal sheds are for backyards and if we weren't trying to dress one up to allow it in the front yard, we wouldn't be here. It's like putting lipstick on a pig, and this is a pretty big pig. Um, and back to when the, when the planning commission, uh, said yes to this, they said, the basis for the planning commission's recommendation is that the exception will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and will not be injurious. This will definitely be injurious to our property value, values, and it's definitely not in harmony with what's on the street. Thank you, sorry for being so long.
All, all those pictures, Marcus, do you have a copy of all those pictures that she presented to the board?
Yeah, yeah, you can. Okay.
In order for those to be part of the record, those have to be submitted.
Okay. I'll let you undo it if you want. Okay, so leave it in here for now or?
Alright, is there anyone else here to speak against the planning commission's decision? You got it, Marcus? Is there anyone here to speak for the planning commission's decision? Come on up, let's give us your name and your address, please.
This was the, this is the applicant, so is there anybody else that is against the request?
I, I asked.
Okay, nobody else?
Yeah.
I'm against it.
Oh, are you? Hold on just a minute then, I'm sorry. Do y'all want to come up and speak or come on up and give us your name and address?
Good morning, my name is Kathy. Have a sore throat. Kathy Capley, forty-eight zero five, East Bel Fontaine, Ocean Springs. I have a big objection to this. Um, they have cut down all the oak trees in their yard. It looks ridiculous. And why they were allowed to cut, I think, fifteen oak trees down to begin with is ludicrous. I, I just don't understand that part either, that they were allowed. We need some type of ordinance for that as well. But you saw the pictures and I just want to let you know that I disagree with the shed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against? Come on up, please.
I'm Kimberly Vaughn and we own forty-eight thirteen and forty-eight seventeen, right next door to where they're putting the shed, we own the pink house.
Okay.
My husband and I formally oppose the special exception.
Get a little closer to the microphone, please, thank you.
I've never spoken on. My, my husband and I formally oppose the special exception approved by the pla- planning commission in June twenty twenty-five regarding the construction of a metal building in the front yard of our neighbor's property. I believe this approval directly contradicts its existing code section four point oh two oh six that clearly states no accessory building or use shall be placed within the required front yard. Allowing this exception only disregards the current code, but also sets a precedent for future metal shares with or without a facade in our neighborhood. I would like to correct several things, misleading accurate, inaccurate statements made by Mr. Sample to the commission. He claimed they had spent most of their time at this house. That is inaccurate. He is there in midday late summer from Thursday or Friday to Monday. Mary is rarely there, she cares for her child in New Orleans. They're not full-time residents, as he stated, he said most of the time. The tree removal, Mr. Sample claimed his variance request was to preserve a live oak tree. This is untrue. At that time, they had already removed several huge oak trees at the street a couple of years ago, not sure exactly when, making it easier for him to back his boat in the driveway. Then they cut four healthy live oak trees on the beachside before applying for the variance and then cut down twelve more healthy live oak trees a couple of weeks after the hearing. None of the sixteen plus the several at the street, none of these trees were, were cut down that were not diseased or dying, as he also stated. He stated at the hearing that he, uh, was trying to preserve a tree. That is not true. This was not a matter of preservation for one tree when you cut down sixteen, seventeen more. His variance was to park boats and build a metal buil- building. He said he cut, he also said that he had to cut his trees down for power lines. And he also said, uh, he cut them over if they're diseased or nothing. You saw the pictures and you can see that it's horrendous. It would not look good anywhere, it's going to completely block a house. Who would want to rent a vacation home with that metal monstrosity, with facade or not, right out the window and right next to the front porch? I would not. Misrepresentation of construction work, the termite damage he mentioned at the hearing and the remodel work at Mary's that he claimed he did was completely done by Mary's brothers, not Mr. Sample. At the hearing, our neighbor said he's a contractor. Uh, at the hearing, uh, Leiter said, yes, he's in construction and then he stated he was a landscaper. And Leiter, Leiter says that he's in construction, yes. He stated, uh, but he has never built a home. This misrepentant representation appeared to influence the commission's perception of his qualifications. Structures on our property, Sample told the commission that we have three buildings, structures on one lot. This is also not true and very misleading. The three structures in our fencing area is our primary residence and a garage that we are currently building on a hundred-foot piece of property. Next door is a fifty-foot piece of property, belongs to my daughter, a house my mother left for her. There's not three houses on, on one lot, it's one house, one house and a garage. And Mr. Sample also stated several ways and times with the commission that the pink house is on or over the property line, which it is not. You know it's four feet from the property line. But he said it many times. Mr., uh, Sample was allowed to say negative impersonal things about Hal and I, myself at the hearing, without being interrupted, stopped, or reminded that his statements were not relevant, or told, we are here about a building, not your neighbor. Mr. Ketchat allowed him to discuss his opinion stating our concrete drains water into their yard, this is also false. Two years ago or more standing on our concrete, we discussed with Mr. Sample our plans to install an edge to prevent any water to, that may drain on his yard. We would redirect that, he's obviously forgotten. Additionally, the true cause of their water issue in Mary's yard stems from their incomplete and poorly maintained bulkhead, not from our property. Mary's bulkhead is missing a piling at the property line. The next pallet piling is not attached to the bulkhead in any way with the tieback cable or a bolt. Several other pilings are not secured that are needed and required to hold a bulkhead in place. One and a half sections of vertical boards lack the runners at the top or bottom to support the bulkhead at our property line and the piling is missing there. These deficiencies allow constant water seepage and erosion in every wave that hits their bulkhead, washing out dirt, causing holes across the front yard as it does behind all bulkheads if they are not secure and properly sealed to prevent water from seeping through the boards as their bulkhead is doing. This is a well-known fact to any person or persons that have had a bulkhead that must be maintained to protect your beachfront property. And any property owner would know that, it protects you and your neighbors. This is serious, this hurricane time, if their bulkhead is not immediately repaired and secured, it could cause damage to both of Mary's neighbors, Wayne and Marta and I. Uh, I, I, it just, if, it's going to fail. If we have a little tropical storm, you wouldn't believe what happens when we have just a tropical storm, the waves splash twelve feet in the air that lands in your lot, on your land, washing it out, it's washing in and out between all the vertical boards they have. I don't know how many feet across it is, ten or twelve, and it's just vertical boards, just no, nothing to secure them. As Mr. Samples, Sample stated in the hearing, this is not just about a blocked window or view, as Mr. Sample stated. The proposed structure would not only dominate the view, would completely dominate and block- The proposed structure would not only dominate the view, would completely dominate and block both the pink house and Mary's house as well, dramatically altering the visual character of our neighborhood. Proving a front yard metal structure with or without a facade or adding a strange-looking addition to a home for storage like this opens the doors for others to receive approval for similar exceptions by ignoring the code. In conclusion, this exception should not have been approved, in our opinion, or seven residents to the west of them and six residents to the east of them, none, not one person. Twenty-two people want this. This is the property owner misrepresented facts, disregards the concerns and opinions of their neighbors and environmental concerns, and continued to blame others for issue of his unmaking like the water in the yard. Reversing this exception is necessary to uphold the integrity of our zoning laws code and protect home values in the surrounding properties. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anyone else here to speak against? Just give us your name and address first, please, sir.
My name is Hal Vaughn. I reside at 4813 East Bellefontaine, and we own two adjoining properties which combine. I got lucky, I lost a crown over the weekend. So I was going to say a lot more, but I can't smile because I'm dumber than I am. I'll get that out of the way first, and I just wanted to know that we, there's no logical reason to put this here. If I were in Mary's shoes and looked around and saw how many of her neighbors were against this, and with good reason, it's not just people being mad at people, and I don't understand why Mr. Stample or Mary wouldn't have mentioned this to us before it hit. I knew two days before the meeting, and that's why I was pretty upset about it, but if people could just talk, you guys would probably be out of a job, some of you anyway. But that's the whole thing. There was never any mention of this, and overnight, and I thought, almost thought we were friends. I feel stupid. We had talked and discussed things. I'd offered things for him to help him out when he was doing work over there, my track hoe, and I did even give him about a quarter of a yard of red clay dirt for the area he was filling in over there. But none of that was mentioned, and the next thing I know, after the meeting, ever since then, this has been pretty bizarre. He's shining lights at the house at night and moving garbage cans up against the fence, and, you know, that was funny in high school, but it's not now, and I'm too old for that crap. I'm not going to put up with it, and I just want to put my two cents worth in, and I hope you guys will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else to speak against? All right. All right. Anyone here to speak for it? Come on.
Scott Stample and Mary Yildic.
Do what now?
This is Scott Stample and Mary Yildic.
Okay. All right. Give us your name and address, Scott.
Scott Stample, 4821 East Bellefontaine. I don't even know where to start.
Just for clarification, you're not the property owner?
That's Mary.
Right.
Right, right. We've been together seventeen years.
No, I get it. I'm just asking, are y'all married?
No, we've been, no, together seventeen.
It's okay to speak. I'm not saying that, but I don't know that you can be an applicant if you don't own the property and you're not married, but you're certainly entitled to speak in favor of the application.
Okay.
I'm assuming Mr. Cumbers will give you a chance as well to speak, however you want to do that. I just wanted to clarify, nothing wrong with you speaking.
Yeah.
But I was reading through the paperwork and had that question.
Okay. So unfortunately, I did not realize some of the subjects that were going to be brought up. Obviously, there's, I have to work way backwards now. So I'm going to start with Mr. Hal and his last statement, saying that they just found out that we wanted to build a storage. We had talked about this over and over and over on the reasons why I'd like to build a storage facility. And I will start off also by saying, and you'll see in the thumb drive here, because I listened to Mr. Hal when they were building their garage about, "You've got to start your building here now." This is why he's giving me this information, and this is a long time ago. You can't build here now, and you can't build here because of certain reasons. So at that point, I had to start doing some math on, well, if you could no longer build closer to our own property, then I have to start it here and move forward. That coming up then with a metal building, which is how it was termed when we tried to apply for this application, only because, and I termed it in those, that verbiage, because of the metal building right beside us, and currently now some more down the street. Had I known that it was going to be an issue, the fact that it was the words "metal" versus "faceting" it to look like our house, because at the board meeting that day, they said, "Look, we really don't have anything to object if you could just make it match your home." I'm like, "Well, no problem. We'll do whatever it takes to make it fit more into the neighborhood." I will say, if either of any of you have ever driven down East Bellefontaine, I appreciate the new structures going up. It makes it look nicer. But for every one of those, there are Ford Katrina cottages, there are people with absolutely trashy situations. One of those, I have to look outside at my neighbor, and unfortunately, again, I didn't know we were allowed to talk about this stuff, and I got to stare at thousands of square feet of concrete in our actual view, which is the Gulf. That's our front yard. And our street, the Gulf is the front, the rear of the house, we pull in, we park, we never see it again. So now, they did get one thing right. I don't live there full-time currently, but I just retired, and I have been spending a tremendous amount of time there. Because Mary's daughter has Down syndrome and has to still go to school, she doesn't get to come with me as much. But that's all going to change once we move there on a more of a full-time basis, meaning the reasons why we want to increase the house. A board member sitting right here on the right-hand side had suggested during all these talks that, by the way, you can actually build onto your house. You can actually just come off of your house a lot easier, giving more room, more length to do more things, and you can make it look just like your house. I have those pictures of the new design, on which, once we heard that, I even made a comment, that had I known that from the beginning, I wouldn't have been asking for a detached situation. I took information from a neighbor that said you could no longer build forward, and that's how that all started. But they were absolutely aware of what we wanted to do, and why we wanted to do it, and how. The issue, and they covered so many things, and I thought we were here to talk about the building and nothing else. Their concrete clearly falls two and a half feet in the direction of our yard. Pictures can see, you can see it on Google Earth, taking all of their backyard water and throwing it onto our property. Our bulkhead is fine. Is it missing a board? I just viewed a picture of my own pictures that I brought. It is missing a top runner, but the bulkhead is solid. I just spent a tremendous amount of money putting a five-hundred-foot pier out in the Gulf, built it out of galvanized grating, because everybody who builds these piers, they all fall apart instantly. Even the one to our neighbors that's complaining, she put her wooden pier up, and it was gone in a year, and mine's still there. So again, so many places I'm going to bounce around. The fact that I'm a landscaper, I hold multiple construction licenses. Is that one of them? Yes. Do I build multimillion-dollar backyards? Absolutely, from lazy rivers to everything, from commercial to residential. They got that wrong as well. So it was never the intent, if there was ever a misspoken thing, to be misspoken, but there wasn't on my behalf. We look out of our house, and again, if I would have known we were bringing things up this like this, when we look out to our left and view Hal and Kim's property, it's a disaster, without a doubt. And we have pictures, if I could let you see them, you would absolutely see this disaster. So they're talking about property values, and what brings them down, and who's going to want to rent here VRBO? When you look at the Gulf, all we see to our left is hellacious concrete, and then you add the fact it drains onto us. We're going to move off from that. Going down that street, it's not the prettiest streets, with some of the things that have been built along the way, to include the, what is it, Indian House and Katrina cottages, and, well, let's see, Hal and Kim's lot across the street from that, which is an eight-foot mound of trash that's been sitting there for months now, I guess waiting to be burned. It's just frustrating to hear how people pick and choose what's an eyesore or what's going to diminish property value. I will just go ahead and pop up our pictures. We will get to Gina in a minute. How do I get her pictures off and our pictures on? Is there a shirt? Okay. So hoping they came up while I was... Okay. So once we found out that we could actually attach, and the one thing is, my software is designed for backyards, and I try to use my software, excuse me, to show, the, this particular structure right here is our current house. The only thing that's not on there is I don't have the wraparound porch that we have. But after speaking to a couple other people, family members, they had gave us one new idea when we do this. Instead of having this specific wing tie the two together, the two structures together, or actually by the door, right, there's a side door that we enter, just go ahead and go up a second floor and then carry that same roofline all the way across, not needing that little expansion. So everything would be, there would be a second floor added to this house, carrying straight across to the front. That's that specific view, and that's our new plan, right? It's not a detached piece of equipment or anything like this. Because I found out from this board member who sat on this corner, by the way, you're absolutely welcome to tie on. So right then and there, I said, "Well, that's exactly what we'll do."
You're talking about Planning Commission board member?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can't remember, I didn't get his name. All right, now let's go. How do you get out of that? Just text it maybe? All right. Let's try to find the site.
While you're looking, can we make sure these are part of the record as well?
Yeah, you can get the disc. Okay. This is not the picture I'm looking for. Since we're complaining about the distance between our houses and everything else, part of it is, I have found that in this neighborhood, either A, people got to do whatever they wanted, when they wanted, or B, variances were given out like Halloween candy on October 31st, because their house is clearly, that's our property line with the interstate. I guess they can even have their AC partially on our land, but you can clearly see that their house is not within ten feet of the property. So yeah, is it going to feel like if I'm ten feet over that we're close together? Well, it's not my fault. It's because they built where they built. And that goes all the way down, so that's part of the issue. If they would have been and had to maintain their variance, that's just the one side of the property. They just built another new structure on the opposite side. And by the way, when I said, which I misspoke, that they have three properties on one, that's three buildings within one fence line. If that is two separate lots that they sided the fence in, my apologies, but that's what it looks like to anybody who drives by. Three houses, one piece of property. The other view, which by the way, I'm sorry for bouncing, across the street is Gina's lot. So when Gina stands on her property, looking towards the Gulf, she's got to look at the pink building, then Hal and Kim's blue building takes the next square footage up, and then they just built the purple building that takes up the far corner. And believe me, this building and the other building are on the property lines, right? All the view is gone, regardless of what the structure looks like. So if my structure is our blue house that's just taller, we're still taking up the exact footprint that we currently take up now. We take up thirty feet, no matter how you look at it. You can't see over it and to see between it, because our house, the actual house that's there now, is ten feet off the property line. We're not three feet off the property line, we're ten. So that alleyway, if I follow the same footprint, would still be the same ten feet, both sides. So if anybody's taking up viewing from Gina's lot, it's Hal and Kim. Then you move to the adjacent lot, which is Wayne's property. He takes up his footprint. The metal green building is directly in front of Gina's lot. I guess she didn't bother to show up to complain about that metal building. People are picking and choosing what's an eyesore, what diminishes the property value when it's convenient. So I'm not asking this board to even consider a metal building. That was only because I had bad information when I applied for this. And I'm willing to, and again, since we have been there, the removal of these oak trees were, we took down a lot of oak trees, like they said, they were, they weren't the most attractive oak trees. It's single trunks, no canopy, just, they were ugly. The ones in our backyard were even worse, and it put so much debris onto our deck, into the roof, and the boards don't stay healthy this way. So we'd rather have a clearer view of the Gulf, because we didn't have any. They were right up against the fence, and so it was causing roof damage as well. So we decided to take those out to have a better view of the Gulf. The one oak tree prior that they said I wasn't trying to save, when I was taking these trees down, I had a chance to take that down, that tree, for a lot less money than what I just took it down for. But I said, "No, I want to keep it," because the building, the metal building, it can fit in front of it. The distance with all the different dimensions, we were told. So I was trying to preserve that tree, didn't have to take it down. After that meeting was over, and I was told that I could build onto the house, right, the tree had to go. But it was a very true statement, trying to save the tree. But whenever I was going to fight me about a detached building that we did get approval for, I said, "Okay, fine. Let's make the neighborhood happy. Let's don't, it's going to cost me a half million dollars to build what I want to build now, as opposed to this detached structure, but let's make everybody happy, let's just add onto the house, and we'll..." That's it. That's over. So these conversations were had and would have been had. There was an actual text message that I sent to Hal and Kim, saying that when we first, when I first got there, everything was great. It was fine. There was no animosity. We tried to help each other, really, for the most part, always had conversation. I showed up on the weekend and saw a ton of concrete poured draining onto our property and a white metal fence put up along. I thought, well, that was, talk about no conversation, of something coming. And as a contractor, nowhere can you drain onto another person's property. You just can't do it. And that kind of started the whole part about, well, we'll see what happens. Let's find out how bad this is going to happen. But when a storm comes, not only am I taking on our own water, but eighty percent of the water is being diverted to us. Not ten percent, it's eighty percent, and it's a horrible slide. We're not here for that. I'm surprised a lot of these things that got brought up, got brought up. But it is a little bit frustrating when people want to pick and choose what they're complaining about and show the pretty houses on East Bellefontaine and how nice they are. I loaded up my camera, I mean, I was advised that we're not talking about all these things, but I can go down there and show you that more than probably sixty to seventy percent of the homes are within ten feet of their property line. Every one of them. And some, I mean, barely go down the pass. And people hang a ladder on the side of a building, or what's going to happen? This is your house, it's your property, obviously. If you want to keep your house and property somewhat trashy, I've been looking at an upside-down birdcage next to me now for weeks in the next-door neighbor's yard, a fairly large cage. It's your property. I'm not going to go and complain because you don't take care of it, or you don't cut your grass, or whatever. I did mention that my neighbors are what we call night house. They get up at three o'clock in the afternoon, their lights are on all night. My lights that he complained about were just the lights that are underneath our house. That's it. That is a yes. That's the only lights I own. So they mow their grass at three in the morning, they do everything, pressure wars. I didn't care. I never went to my neighbor and complained about, "Hey, do you really have to do this all night?" I understand. They're older, they don't like the heat, they like to work at night.
Just don't get into all that. Let's just...
Well, it was necessary for you.
Is it necessary?
Yeah.
It was for you.
Let's just leave that.
Okay. So at the end of the day, people seem to pick and choose what is convenient for them on everything else. If we move, now that we're going to move on from that, and now that you have seen, I was looking for one picture from the front.
Start at the front.
Gina did all that for us. So I would like to know how everybody walked around on our property to take all these pictures without permission.
Okay.
Again, she did it for us, too. We all know about the metal building.
I want to get to everything.
I'm looking for the front.
Mary, one of y'all need to do the talking. This lady's trying to take all this down. Give us your name. Give us your name and address, Mary.
Mary Guidry, 4821 East Belfontaine, Ocean Springs. Okay, that's another metal building that's down the road. Okay, this is Kimberly and House Purple Garage that they just built. It's very close to the property line and the people that are objecting in the, in the, um, the orange, the salmon color, they have no issue with that in the spite of their property line. And they're two houses away from me. So they didn't have an issue with that, but they have an issue with anything I wanna build. This is a personal thing, if y'all have it caught on.
Mary, get a little closer to the microphone later.
Okay. Okay, this is what we look at. This is Kimberly and House Building. It's been this way for years, except for the, the purple building is brand new. So that's what we, we're gonna talk about, things looking ugly. This is what we've looked at pre-years. Okay. Okay, this is the garage they're building. Okay. They're able to build a garage, but we're not able to build any kind of storage garage thing that we're going to facade. This has been faceted. It's a garage, but it has been faceted.
Well, it's, she, she doesn't understand the terminology.
Y'all got it. One at a time. She can't, she can't take it down.
Okay, we already got that. Okay, so I think we're up to date on the pictures now. But I just wanted to show you how people are picking and choosing.
I don't know how to get him off the phone. I actually have some further pictures that I was trying to find of the front view of the new structure. It actually looks nice. It looks like, it's better looking than most of the homes. The new thing that we want to build actually looks nicer than some of the homes that are there now. On there, that's kind of a, not the best view, but I was trying to find the front view. The garage doors nowadays, on, on some of these structures, they blend, they're not metal doors, like roll-up doors. They actually blend in to the home. They're $21,000 apiece, but they really do dress it up nicely on the front. I can't, I thought I had the picture. It's in my phone, but when we loaded it on here, I probably should have paid more of attention to that. So, when this, and again, this is, we're going to change this little feature and just go straight up, straight over. And by doing so, we, this structure here actually gets to move further back. You don't have the, the gap, let's just say. So anyway, it's nothing more than somebody building a new house. They built a new home right now and decided to build a home that was 4,000 square feet because by the time we add this on and add this together, we're gonna go from 1,200 square feet to 4,000 square feet. Built by a contractor, a general contractor, not by me.
So, you understand that that's a totally separate permit, right?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so that's a totally, so, so what we're here for right now is, is the proposed metal building. That's what we're here for. What you wanna do there is something totally irrelevant to what we're talking about here. That, that's a totally separate issue.
What he's saying is, instead of building that metal building, he's just gonna connect his home to the building and not build the metal building separately, is what he's saying.
Then why are we here? Because that, that, that's totally separate from what we're here for. Totally separate. So, so what you wanna do there is what you have to clear through them with a set of plans, architectural plans, with an engineer stamp and all that. But, but that has nothing to do with what we're here for, so we're wasting a lot of time.
I agree. And I said...
So, so if it were me, I would withdraw my complaint to this and, and call it moot and, and then get you an engineer, an architect, draw that up for you and then resubmit that to the planning department.
I have no problem with that. I made it very clear. I don't know where the notes are, but at the end, when the gentleman on the end had mentioned to us right then and there, because I also withdrew my variance of the 10 feet when I found out about that. I said, "Just kill that. We don't need to stay here for that." And I said, "Now that we know that we can attach, we are going to attach."
Okay.
We're gonna attach and that's how we're gonna be. And, but nobody wants to talk. I sent a text message saying, "All we gotta do is communicate with each other. It doesn't have to be this way." I got zero response, just a bunch of negativity. And like someone else said, it's just nothing to...
Well, we don't need to hear all the negativity and all that stuff. So, so basically, if you withdraw your original application, we're done. Correct? Okay.
You can, you can, like, you can submit that to planning department and that's allowed by right. But if you wanna withdraw your original application, this hearing will be over.
But you understand that that has to be drawn by an architect because you're in a flood zone. It has to be engineered. It has to have flood vents on it. It has to have a lot of things on it before it ever gets approved. And aesthetically, it's gotta be pleasing, okay?
I realize all of that.
Okay. Do you wanna withdraw your original application?
Okay, I just wanna make, make sure I understand. I will withdraw this application with the understanding, I guess, that with the, with the proposed engineered drawings and all of the above, do my neighbors then have the right to... I have to go through all this again. It's allowed by right. I withdraw.
I think, I think we need to hear from, from, yeah, Ms. Guidry as well, please.
Yeah, it's on her property.
And, and let's do this, just kind of throw this legal thing in it. Withdraw it without prejudice to resubmit something new that may or may not be allowed by right. You won't know that till it's submitted, right, Marcus?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, that's fine, but I've been told by people back there that we could not even add on. So that's been an issue, that you can't do that either. You can't do that either. So, you're telling me that we can go through the steps that we need to go through and build on. They have no recourse to, to write letters back.
As long as you're within the setbacks.
Yeah, okay.
As long as you're within the setbacks or any special, you, you can submit it as long as it's an addition.
As long as there are no variance.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're making it hard on her. She's just trying to get clear too, and I understand what she's doing. But, uh, go ahead, Marcus.
You're, you're welcome to resubmit as long as you have the required documentation and you meet the setbacks for that area, you can, you can add on to your structure.
Okay. Are you willing to withdraw your application now?
Yes.
Okay.
Let, let's do this, just so it's, it's all clear. If we can have a motion to accept their withdrawal of their application without prejudice to their right to resubmit something to the planning department, at which time the planning department will review it. And I don't know what you're gonna submit. I know generally, and Marcus will tell you whether it's of right, you have that of right, or whether you have to get a variance or anything else, so. But, a motion to accept their withdrawal without prejudice to their right to resubmit, whatever they wanna submit to the planning department.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Bossard just made the motion. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. It's been withdrawn. Thank y'all.
Okay. 15 minutes later.
Okay, that's it. Thank y'all.
Nah, he'll never do it, I don't think.
If he'd have told us that ahead of time, we, we could have canceled all of this.
Yeah. To any structure, as long as you're within the setbacks.
Thank you, Marcus. Hey, y'all, Mark. You can put a time in, but...
I'm telling you, man.
I mean, it's, most, I know most of the municipalities do. What'd you need?
Not yet. I'm getting it set up and then I can do it.
Yeah, really.
All right. Nick, let's give her just a minute to get packed up, then we'll take off again. Go ahead, John. Go ahead.
Engineered all the windcaves.
Hi, Mr. Randy.
Hey, guys. This is Joshua from Jacksonville, Chance Report. Uh, we're getting everything set up. Here's the deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, one, one thing I'm, I'm gonna mention real quick is there are like six properties here. All of them but one have been withdrawn, so.
Now what? Say that again, Nick.
All of them but one have been withdrawn by the appellant.
I don't hear.
Me that submitted five.
Oh, okay.
I mean, six, and she was withdrawn, but one.
The only one that's in question is the Vault LLC.
Oh, this is in Pasca, dude.
Yeah, I must have given that.
All right. We ready?
So just the vault, or does it mean the vault?
Yeah.
She handled that, Troy.
So, uh...
Let's get started. This is a tax protest appeal hearing for O'Connor and Associates. Go ahead, Nick.
Yep, well, I'll just say, I mean, I guess off the bat, we'll let Ms. Short go, but all they've done is basically submit a value that's 10% lower than our assessment. Provided this small bit of documentation this morning, so. We believe the value is appropriate as is. We'll let her make her statements.
They're on the phone, Troy.
But you've reviewed it, Nick, and y'all stand behind your value group.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right, Ms. Randy?
Yes.
Uh, you can go ahead and present your appeal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, yeah, so this is for 51 account located at 611 Denny Avenue. Um, this is for the liquor stores. So for this account, I did include a cost workup. My first page is my cost analysis. Um, so what I did for the improvement is I used the liquor store as retail. Um, it's going based off the Marshall's Good Guidelines as a Class C average. Um, I have the actual year listed at 1974, the base area 3,440 feet. Um, my base rate based on the Marshall's Good Guidelines comes out to $111. Now, following, again, the NBS guidelines based on the year built of this property, the depreciation percent good would come out to 20%. However, you know, just looking at images of the property and you see that it looks as in better condition than just 20%, so I used 15. That's what my value actually, 170,523. Um, and then I did use, I did apply extra features for concrete. Um, I used $2 price per foot, which means 45,954. And this got my total value out to 216,483. And then, um, the remaining pages are just supporting documents on the Marshall's Good Guidelines. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Nick, the first thing I'll say about this cost approach is, you know, this is the old bank building.
Yeah.
You know, we believe the Class C is incorrect. 50% depreciation is incorrect. After purchase, they remodeled this building substantially. Uh, they sold some properties next door. We have the details on it, you know, for in excess of a million dollars. You know, this, this, this property is, the property is probably worth, quite honestly, what we have it assessed for. So there's, in our opinion, there's no need to make 377,000
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
For a 3,400 square foot, on a highway 90.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And I guess I should say, and such are recommendations to not, to deny the appeal.
So...
Anybody, go ahead, Randy.
What was the, uh, total amount of renovation money that was put into the building?
Off of permits since the purchase of the building, we're showing $27,500 was put into it.
That's the SITPAS bill's permit amount.
Permit amount.
Right, okay. So, I, I, I agree with your assessment, Nick. And, uh, so I'm gonna make a motion to continue with the assessment that our tax researcher has made on this property because I feel like it's, uh, it's, it's worth what he's guided to praise it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bossard, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. That takes care of that.
Let me ask, Nick, if, um, what all has been submitted?
The only thing that was submitted was the asset you said on the screen.
Okay, the, but we've got, that, and we've got this information as well? Just wanna make sure that we have everything that would be part of the record. What was submitted to the board supervisors for review?
Yeah, the email chain that you have, that was originally submitted and then, um, the note is what went out from the Chance Report's office. She read lines on that where she withdrew those and then that's the supporting documentation we received for the one.
Keep that in as part of the record, please.
All right.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Nick.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, could I get a motion to return to executive session?
Sir, move.
Have a motion by Mr. Ross.
I'm sorry, one more thing. We need to do that order of the board supervisors that was after the tax bill. I mean, we can do it when we come out at the next session if you want to.
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, let's go it down.
Had voted.
Okay.
No, we haven't.
Okay. So I, I have before you guys an order of the board supervisors for the real and personal property assessment rolls.
I'll second. Who did, who made the motion? Randy did. Motion by Mr. Bossard, a second by myself. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Now we're done. Now we've made, we have a motion and a second to return to...
Before I made a motion, I made a second to go back in executive session.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay.